Jay, good morning. Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session. Today is Saturday, March 25th, 2023. The time is 11:04 a.m. My name is Speaker William Low, and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Representative Charles McHenry to say our invocation, please. A man, Madoff Representative McHenry. Roll call, National Council Secretary Alicia Strobel.
Speaker William Low.
Here.
Galen Cloud.
De La Gueye.
Mary Crawford.
De La Gueye.
Joyce Steer.
Yamaigus.
Patrick Freeman. Sandra Golden.
Present.
Leonard Gouge.
Here.
Nelson Harjo.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Randall Hicks. Robert Heft.
Present.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Inahola Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph. You have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent, that constitutes a quorum. Any business conducted this morning will be valid. Onto approval of minutes. We have minutes from planning session, February 21, 2023. Pre-agenda quarterly session, February 25, 2023. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Speaker.
Speaker, this is Representative Marshall.
Oh. I make a motion to approve the minutes with any changes necessary.
Representative Inahola Osborne makes a motion to approve the minutes with any necessary changes, seconded by Representative Anna Marshall. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Thomas Inahola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph. Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks. Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. You have fourteen in favor, zero against, and one to abstain.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, one abstention. The minutes from planning session, pre-agenda, pass. Onto the order of business. TR-23-025. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a service agreement with Biomedical Applications of Oklahoma, Inc., for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsor, Representative Mary Crawford.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Mary Crawford makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Thomas Inahola Osborne. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-025 is adopted. TR-23-027. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing Contract with Harris Contractors. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
As a boy, I was just a gentleman.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Thank you.
Seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-027 is adopted. TR-23-028. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, approving the tribal internal control standards submitted by the Muskogee Creek Nation Public Gaming Commission. Sponsor, Representative Randall Hicks. Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randolph. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-028 is adopted. TR-029. Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing commitment for matching funds in collaboration with the State of Oklahoma for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, Tribal Cooperation Grant Program. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Say your motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-029 is adopted. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, establishing a new Title 28, Chapter 13, entitled Muskogee Creek Nation Land Referral Services. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
As a boy, I was just a gentleman.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Inahola Osborne. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks. Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Inahola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph. You have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA-23-018 is adopted. NCA-23-019. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing an appropriation for the Muskogee Creek Nation Realty Land Referral Services. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
As a boy, I was just a gentleman.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Inahola Osborne. Discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks. Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Inahola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph. You have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA-23-019 is adopted. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Oklahoma Native Assets Coalition for the benefit of the Office of the Secretary of the Nation. Sponsor, Representative Mark Randolph. Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Discussion, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Mark Randolph. Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks. Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Inahola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA-23-021 is adopted. Last item on the agenda. NCA-23-022. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending MCNCA Title 19, Chapter 2, entitled Organization of Election Board and Precinct Election Committees, Chapter 10, entitled Absentee Voting, and Chapter 15, entitled Campaign Finance Code. Sponsor, Representative Leonard Gouge.
Figure motion to adopt.
Representative Leonard Gouge makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Second Speaker Robert Huff. Discussion.
Figure, can I have somebody from the election board?
Yes, sir, do we have a representative from the election board? Miss Sarah, are you on?
I am, sir.
Yes, ma'am, the floor is yours.
I'm open for questions.
All right, do we have any questions? Miss Sarah.
Figure, if she can clarify what she's going to do about the absentee ballots and how they'd be voted.
Certainly, Miss Sarah, did you hear that from Representative Gouge?
Uh, yes, so we are requesting an extended time to deliver the absentee ballots to our absentee voters. So we're extending the time from, I believe it was 20 days to 30 days. That, and in addition to that, we have approved in this year's budget to use priority mailing to send the ballots to absentee voters, as well as priority mailing to return those ballots to the election board. That's a two-day delivery time, so the absentee voters will have approximately 20, 26 days to return their ballots to us by, by mail. So we're hoping that the, the priority mail will, will help ensure that all ballots are received. We did keep the election day deadline in terms of ballots must be received by 11 a.m. on election day. We believe that that is necessary in order to have a timely election and be able to certify the results.
Standing, thank you, ma'am, Mr. Gouge, is that good to go?
Yes, sir.
Outstanding, alrighty, sir. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks. Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Inahola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph. Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA-23-022 is adopted. That concludes our agenda. Other business, do we have any other business, council representatives? Hearing no other business announcements. Miss Anna Marshall, would you like to make an announcement, please?
Uh, yes, um, I don't know if it's an announcement or just something that, that I would just like to acknowledge for today. Madoff Speaker, for letting me have this opportunity to say a few words. I'd just like to acknowledge that March is Women's History Month, and the theme is celebrating women who tell our story. And as you meet today on this historical occasion, and as you stand on holy and sacred ground, may we remember and honor the women who sacrificed that day to protect what they loved, their families and community. The women of this place have a story and stories that are yet to be told. So we Muskogee women and men share a responsibility of telling their stories of strength, endurance, resilience, and courage. And so all Muskogee women have their own and fully stories to tell and to celebrate on where, on whose shoulders we stand. And the women who sacrificed two centuries ago helped shape us today. We are their prayers that were answered. And we're still here as Muskogee people. So today, there in the homeland and here in Muskogee Reservation, we celebrate the contributions of our Muskogee women of the past and present by, by sharing their leadership and their contributions to our culture, to our families, to our communities, tribal government, and contemporary society. So today, in the midst of continued barriers to overcome, lack of acknowledgement at times, Muskogee women will continue to persist in the battles and move forward for our families, communities, and government. It is a good day to be a Muskogee woman. And so Madoff Speaker, for allowing me this opportunity to say a few words, thank you.
Yes, Representative Marshall, thank you so much for those kind words. Gentlemen, please join me in giving our Muskogee women a round of applause today for this month. We greatly appreciate you all. You have no idea how much, how much we appreciate you, Madoff. I would like to make an announcement just to say, Madoff, to the Horseshoe Bend Park Service for allowing our representatives that are there, that are there, representing to the legislative branch, the opportunity to join our meeting from out there. So if there's any representatives in that room, I say Madoff, and if, if a representative from there would like to say a few words, that's at Horseshoe Bend, just to tell us how the, the experience is so far in today's event. And I ask any one of you, please.
Y'all can hear me out there. Speaker, just so you know, uh, this is Matthew Robinson. He's one of the park rangers here.
Outstanding. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
I'm trying. It is, is a powerful place. This, this place, to be on Muskogee land is powerful. To be here when you all are home is, uh, it's something different. You know, I've told some people that we've met with in different meetings, you know, I've heard some thank yous, like, thank you for allowing you all to be here today. It's not ours to hear, thank you for, uh, this is your home. Thank you for coming back, thank you for letting us be a part. Thank you for everything you do for your own people. Thank you for what you're doing here today to educate other people, the people here, people that have traveled to be here. It is a, I was born on Muskogee land. With my whole life on Muskogee land, I'm not Muskogee, I'm not native. But, but to, to be a part of, of some of these things, some of these healings, these connections, this is a privilege and an honor, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is there a representative, council representative that would like, like to say a quick word?
Hey, Speaker, I will, I guess. I, uh, yeah, I'd just like to thank the National Park staff here at South, uh, at Horseshoe Bend. And they've been real kind and accommodating to us and helping us out to get everywhere we need to go. Yesterday, we got to go out to the old New York, the tribal town, the location of, and they showed us around there. It's just a great experience to be out here and, you know, with, uh, the staff here, like I said again, you know, they've been just gracious and kind and everything they've done for us, and they've really taken care of us well. So, uh, I just, that's all I want to say, is just thank you to them. It's been awesome.
Outstanding, thank you, Representative Hicks. And I will say again to the Parks Service, thank you for allowing us to display our great seal behind our representatives.
Hi, Speaker.
Yes.
Uh, this is Galen Cloud.
Yes, sir.
I, I'd just like to say, uh, being out here, I just want to thank this Park Service for having us. I was, I was one of the ones that was asked to come by our Justin Nagy, Sonny Teoli. He's almost in his nineties. He's a, a member of New York's ceremonial ground. Uh, I'm very honored that he asked me to come out here with three other gentlemen out here to represent New York. Uh, we went out with the Park Service yesterday, as Representative Hicks said. We went out there, looked at the old ground. Uh, and we come back here to the Horseshoe Bend. And, uh, being out there speaking, it was, it was very humbling. It was, it was what we hear from our elders back home is what they tell us here of everything that, that we have come where the sun rises. So as, as we come here, it's, it's a very, it's a very humbling feeling. It's, it's a feeling that I, I believe every, everyone, everyone is sitting at this table, everyone that's in this room feels that feeling, how, how different it may be, but there's a feeling here. I know at one time, uh, our elders always told us not to, you know, not to come back. There's, there's, there's nothing here for us, which, which they were right, but we're not here to stay. We're just, we're just making sure that everything is taken care of, which is, everything is being taken care of with the Park Service here. And, and just looking around here, we, we know why our elders, our warriors, even our women, even to our little children, our warriors who fought so hard to keep this land. We know why, as we see it. Our women were here, it just wasn't our warriors that died here. It was women and children also. So as, as we are here, we're not here to celebrate. We're here to make sure that our, our grounds that originated here, our fires that no longer burn here, but they still burn bright in Oklahoma. And we still have the grounds that are still going. Our traditions are still going. Our language is still going. Everything that our elders brought from here, back home, that they suffered on the walk, that they were forced to remove, be removed from here at gunpoint, to be marched in the hottest summers, in the coldest winters, they made it there. They made it there for us. And so our traditions are still going. And so we have to keep that, as our fires burn, as we speak our language, like I said earlier, outside, as we keep them, as we, as we keep those alive, we keep our elders alive. Madoff Speaker, Madoff to the Park Service, Madoff to Chief, Madoff to Second Chief, our Ambassador, who's here also, to the National Council that showed up here, to our, our, our staff, to our Muskogee citizens who, who are here also, we thank them. We thank them for being here and for having this day for us. Madoff.
Madoff, Representative Cloud, Chief Hill, Second Chief Beaver, would you all like to say a quick word, sir, gentlemen?
Uh, Speaker, thank you for allowing us.
Yes, sir, yes, chief.
Um, as Representative Hicks and Representative, I had mentioned, you get a totally different feeling here. While I was on the, uh, you know, the original side of New York, we all introduced ourselves along with some of the Parks Service individuals and some other group. After that, I know Galen said some words, I was told him by Justin Nagy on what to say. The wind stopped blowing, there was, there was nothing, you could hear everything. And once he finished, um, the little butterfly just come flew right in between everybody. Just made a circle, come in clean, and just took off. And probably five minutes later, the wind started blowing again. So everything just stopped. I had to stop some other ones because they were picking up wild onions. There were so many too. You know, there was, I think, you may have looked in someone's vehicle, they may smell like wild onions. Totally different feeling here, and the hospitality that the Park Service has provided has been outstanding. The event that we done, just finished up was, uh, was perfect as well. It rained, just poured down rain, rain all the way up till probably what, eight o'clock? And it just stopped now, it's sunny now, the sun is shining. So it's been a good day. It's been, been a good day for here. Madoff.
Madoff Chief. Second Chief.
Madoff Speaker, um, you know, every time that I know I come back and I bring my family back to our homelands, it elicits a response and emotion from you. And it's been different every time I come through here because I think about different things every time I'm coming through here. And so, uh, so we talked about, um, different emotions yesterday and, and today, what the day means. And so, um, I tell people, it's okay to be angry. It's okay to be sad. It's okay, um, to feel an emotion of what this paper presents because it's supposed to. This is our homeland, this is where we come from, this is ours. And so that's why it's so important that we have, uh, people come back here. That's why it's so important that we have our Culture Department come back here. That's why it's so important that, um, we, we don't forget what happened here. Because once we forget, that's when we start having emotions. And once we start having emotions about our people, once we stop caring about our people, then that's time to hang it up. Then you shouldn't be in these positions. And so that's what today's all about. It's about coming back, acknowledging what had happened, acknowledging our ancestors, acknowledging that, hey, we're still here. We're still a functioning government. We're still people, we still have our culture and language. And so once we stop having emotions about that, then it's time to hang it up. And so everybody that's in here has experienced a certain emotion from today, from yesterday, and maybe from the things that we'll, we'll do later on. But we're supposed to, we're supposed to have these emotions. So, um, so I firmly believe, um, that, uh, you know, it's very important that we come back here. I firmly believe that it's important for my, my children to be here, for my wife to be here. I wish my son and his children to be here, but every time, they will be here. They will. But, um, but that's, that's just why today's, uh, today, like today, is so important that we get to tell our side of history. We get to tell our perspective of how things happen, not just one side, but there's always two sides. And so today, today is about telling our side. So, uh, so Madoff, for everybody that showed up today.
Madoff, Second Chief, Chief, great words. Council Representative, thank you. I just want to say to you all, Madoff, for representing our great nation back at our homelands for this commemoration. And also, it would, I would be awful if I didn't say, Madoff, to the National Council staff for setting up this meeting. So, Madoff, you all, do we have any other announcements? Representative Hicks, Randall Hicks. Yes, sir.
Hey, Speaker.
Yes.
I hate to cut you off there, but if no one, if they don't speak into a microphone, we can't hear nothing.
Can't hear, okay. Can you hear him now?
No.
Can you all hear me?
Where are you?
We can't hear Randall.
You'll hear him in just one second.
I won't repeat everything that I said earlier, but I just want to say this. You just stop and think about, like I said, the trials that our people went through back in the day at Horseshoe Bend. I want to just say this, just remember, we are the grandchildren of the Indians that you weren't able to remove. I just wanted to say that. Think about it, everything they endured, we're still here, we're still pressing forward.
Outstanding words, Representative Hicks, thank you, sir. Do we have any other announcements? Adjournment, onto adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second Speaker Robert Huff makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Representative Harjo. I would like to ask Representative, excuse me, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, I would like to ask Representative Galen Cloud to say our benediction, which will serve as our adjournment.
Madoff Speaker.
I the honey, I the book, the hallelujah, the answer.